Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the City of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
I call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Whole on April 23rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let the citizens testify in the United States of America in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Next item is roll call. Chad, can you help us?
Good evening, all. Mayor Arata Frata. Alder Dantzler is absent with excuse. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Ladase.
Here.
Alder Maldonado. Alder Reichstedt.
Here.
Alder Vefedary.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next item of business is the approval of minutes. I'll need a motion on the draft minutes of the March 19th, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting.
I move approval.
Motion approved by Alder Jetzer. Can I get a second?
Second motion.
Second by Alder Herbst. Any comments or questions?
What does dran mean?
Wait, what?
It says approval of minutes. March 19th, 2025, dran minutes. Draft.
We got it. All in favor of approving the draft minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is public appearances for non-agenda items. We have nobody in chambers nor online, so we can move on to our next item. Item six, agenda items. Six A, council orientation and onboarding with our city administrator Chad Brecklin and our city attorney Valerie Zissman. I'll turn it over to you, Chad.
Good evening. This is the annual council onboarding and orientation. I know a number of you have gone through this last year and in many other situations, maybe additional years. So some of this will not necessarily be new for you. We do obviously have a couple of new alders welcome, so hopefully you will find this material useful. I also, when I get to my presentation, have some handouts for the common council. In momentarily, I'll be emailing both my presentation as well as the council handbook that had been mentioned. City Attorney Valerie Zissman is seated to my right. She is going to do her portion of the orientation first. We made the deal right before we started that if she goes first, she gets to leave first. So I think she got the better end of the deal.
It was tough to pass up.
Yeah. So I'll turn it over to you, Valerie, if you're ready to go.
I believe I'm ready to go, although I just want to confirm for the purpose of sharing my presentation and my all set. I have plugged, yes, look at that. Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you very much for taking a little bit of time to hear to me talk about the most riveting of topics you probably will ever hear about. Public records, open meetings, ethics conflicts, and then we'll touch on Robert's rules a bit as well. I do want to let you know, as Chad mentioned, I'm the city attorney, and I just want to make sure that you're aware that I am available here for you at the City of Pittsburgh as a resource. This presentation is not intended to make you experts in the field of public records or open meetings or ethics or conflicts, but it is intended to introduce you to the concept, give you a foundation, and hopefully lay the groundwork in place so that you know when you have a question and then you can feel free to come and talk to me. My phone number is on the slides. It's also on the website. Happy to field your questions. You may ask me at some point a question I won't know the answer to, and I promise you I will tell you honestly if I don't know, and I will get back to you. But I am always happy to help. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. I have an open door policy. It's not just because I'm nice, although I'd like to think I am. It's also my job, right? So ask away, please feel free, provided, of course, that you're asking me questions with regard to your city business. While I'm the city attorney, I can't give you legal advice in your personal matters that you may have that aren't related to your position as a council member of the City of Pittsburgh. I also want to mention, as this invariably comes up from time to time, that while I am here to provide you with advice, when asked, and sometimes even when not asked, sorry in advance, I am not I'm not the person who does enforcement of these rules. That is something that lies either with the DOJ or the district attorney of Dane County or whatever county the violation of these rules is alleged to have occurred. So sometimes folks come to me asking, what am I going to do about enforcing someone else what they think is violation? And the answer is usually nothing other than perhaps mentioned to them that they should reconsider. But again, that's because my role does not involve enforcement of these laws and rules. It's to advise you guys, to help you, as well as other officers of the city, not to make the violations in the first place. So the other reason I mention that is because I don't want you to be afraid to come to me with a question. Again, you're not going to be in trouble with me if you come to me and say, hey, I did this. Is this a problem? What do I do? Don't feel like you have to be afraid to come talk to me because, again, my role is to help you and provide you with advice. And I think I probably say this every year, so I'll say it again this year as well. Sorry for those of you who've been on the council for a while. I don't get paid based on whether you follow my advice or not, so I'm not going to be offended if you don't like my advice. I do get paid, however, to provide it when you ask. So that's, again, that's my job. Don't feel bad. Don't feel intimidated. Don't feel nervous. Please come talk to me. So with that, we will dive head into the open meetings law, which generally, the concept of an open meetings law is that all meetings of governmental bodies have to be noticed and they have to be open and reasonably accessible to all members of the public. Now, there are some limited situations where sorry about that. There are some limited situations where there's some closed sessions that may be available, and you'll see them on the agenda from time to time. Those are pretty fact-specific, and they have to be in very specific circumstances. But otherwise, generally speaking, meetings have to be noticed and they have to be open and reasonably accessible to members of the public. Now, why are we talking about that today? Well, because you're a governmental body. The common council is a governmental body, and therefore, it's subject to these laws. Now, the idea behind the open meetings law is, and I should add, Wisconsin's open meeting law is called the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, but many states, most states, I believe, and certainly the federal government as well, have these laws. And the idea is that democracy works best, right, when people have complete information regarding the affairs of government. It is broadly interpreted by the courts to promote the policy of openness, and that's written right into the law. And so what that means is that in close questions where, you know, a judge might say, well, I don't know, should we kind of could interpret it either way, there's this directive in the statute that says, interpret it in favor of openness. And the courts do disfavor any kind of interpretation that would facilitate the evasion of the policy of openness. So in other words, we're not going to get around things on a technicality. So the idea is government business needs to happen out in the open where the people who live in the city of Pittsburgh or anyone else for that matter can come and see how government works, how these decisions are made, what information is considered, et cetera. So as I mentioned, it applies to governmental bodies. The common council obviously is a governmental body. So are other boards, commissions, committees, and other subcommittees of this body, as well as citizen committees. So they all are subject to this open meetings law. So what is a meeting? That might be a question on your mind, and if it's not, let me raise that question. A meeting is defined in the statute as the convening of members of a governmental body for the purpose of exercising the responsibility, authority, powers, or duties delegated to or vested in that body. So there's a two-part test called the showers test, and it basically says, look at two things. One is the purpose of the meeting, and two is the number requirement. So the purpose means, why are you meeting? What are you talking about or what are you doing? It's a pretty expansive concept. It's not limited to just making decisions. So, you know, preliminary decisions, discussion of city business, information gathering, all of those can fall under the purpose of exercising governmental authority as well as and it doesn't require you to necessarily interact. So if there's a body of members that are gathered to gather information, for example, aren't talking to each other, but they're engaged in gathering information, that can satisfy the purpose. The second part, as I mentioned, is the numbers, and that's what we refer to as the quorum. And this is where things get kind of interesting. And before we get to the quorum, I just want to mention that in our ordinance, it talks about six members of the council being sufficient for a quorum. That's not what I'm talking about for today's conversation because that is really how many of you can gather in order to be able to convene a meeting in the first place, right? To have a formal meeting. And that's said by our ordinance. But when we talk about the quorum under the open meetings law, what really constitutes a quorum can depend on the circumstances. And by that, I mean, ultimately, the question is, is how many council members can determine the outcome of an action? So let me give you an example. The easy answer might be, well, five of you is a quorum because five of you can pass a measure, right? So that's easy. So I guess the takeaway there is an easy, don't, please don't meet the five of you without noticing and making it an open meetings and having an agenda out, et cetera. But it's more complicated than that because in some situations where a supermajority of the body is required, then a much smaller number of members can block an action. And that's what we call a negative quorum. So the easiest, simplest example to that would be any kind of measure that would require six votes to pass. Three people can block a measure. And so in those situations, a meeting of three people could constitute a quorum. Similarly, if fewer than all of you are in attendance and then somebody also recuses them or abstains from voting, again, we can get down to a situation where only three alders or three council members can constitute a quorum. So the complicated answer, of course, is how many is a quorum? It depends. Generally speaking, my rule of thumb is that if there are two alders meeting to talk about something and sponsoring something for the agenda, that's almost never going to be a problem. Three can get complicated, and of course, from there, the odds of having a potential quorum there obviously increases. So there are a number of city attorneys in the state that have interpreted this differently. I know of some that have said, like, the smallest number is quorum, and therefore, you shall not ever meet in any setting. Practically speaking, I'm not going to tell you that anytime the three of you meet, that's a problem, but I do want you to have it on your radar because it potentially could be. So just something to think about. If ever you want to talk to me about that, come talk to me. Again, always happy to discuss. So then the question becomes, is do we have a meeting? Have we convened here? And this is where things kind of get interesting. Of course, if you all gather in the same place, that's, you've convened. That's easy. On the other hand, there's other ways for you to communicate with each other. And so historically, written letters have not been interpreted to constitute a meeting. And the idea has been that generally, it's a one-way communication, but even if one of you sends the other a letter, by the time it's received and then a response is written and then it's sent, the responses are spread over time. Now, of course, I'm talking about kind of a different era, right? So open meetings law, case law, and ethics opinions and interpretations go back a long time. So my guess is most of you don't send each other letters and won't. But I put it out there because I want to give you an example of how some types of communication might be interpreted to be not sufficiently close together to constitute a convening of members. On the other hand, telephone calls, video conferences, Zoom calls, right? Now, that permits instantaneous communication. And so if it meets the purpose and the numbers, then it is convening of a meeting. Likewise, kind of a complicated area is email, electronic discussion boards, instant messaging, social networking. Think that can implicate open meetings laws, depending on how you're using it. And so I just, like I said, I just want to put these issues out there for you on your radar. I don't believe any courts have ruled on any, like, specifically email or instant messaging type communications. But I do know that the DOJ has issued opinions that it likely would implicate open meetings laws because of the nature of that kind of communication. In effect, you're having a virtual meeting when you communicate that way, or at least you can. One other type of quorum, so we talked about quorum, we talked about negative quorum. One other type of quorum, because two is just not enough, is a walk-in quorum. And this is kind of this idea where you can't avoid the implications of the open meetings law by taking one meeting and breaking it up into a bunch of parts. And so, you know, one of you can't go talk to the other two, kind of decide on what you want to do and how you're going to vote, and then one of those folks goes to talk to another two people, have basically the same conversation on behalf of the first person, and so on, in a way, kind of like, if you might recall, playing telephone, right, as a child or if you ever played that game. So that does not, breaking one communication into a series of gatherings among groups does not take away the obligations that we have under the open meetings law. So again, complex, fact-specific. Consult with me if you have questions. But, you know, generally speaking, the same thing applies, right? Is there sufficient number that are communicating outside of a meeting to control the outcome of something? That's, you know, that's when we have a problem. So there are notice requirements for meetings, and staff handles that for the city. So you don't have to worry about letting staff know that you plan to attend a council meeting. We assume that you will, and they're regularly scheduled, and our clerk's department will take care of posting all the notices as required by law. But if you think that you might be attending a different meeting where other council members are going to be present, then you can work with me and the city administrator and the clerk to determine if there's a need for a notice. So for example, if several of you wish to attend a planned commission meeting or a library board meeting or something of that nature, you're absolutely welcome to do that. Just let staff know so that we can post a notice of a potential quorum on the agenda for that meeting. So the takeaway here is that the purpose of open meetings law is to encourage government bodies to deliberate in the open and to make their decisions in the open. So limit the discussion of city business to city meetings unless you're having a small, private conversation with one or at most two alders. Let staff know when you think you might be attending an event that other members are also likely to attend. Again, I want to be clear. I don't mean if you want to go to a Badger game, right? That's fine. You don't have to let staff know. But if you're going to attend something that, a meeting where some information is either going to be discussed or you're gathering information about city business, City of Pittsburgh business, let staff know. Be mindful of quorum, negative quorum, walk-in quorum, all the quorums. A good example of that would be if you receive a communication from staff that goes to the mayor and council list. Avoid replying all to that message so that you don't send the communication to all of the other council members. And then one thing that comes up from time to time is not discussing things that are not on the agenda. So because open meetings law requires things to be noticed, talking about something that isn't on the agenda in effect takes away the opportunity of the public to know that a topic was going to be discussed. And this comes up all the time, right? Because we have non-agenda items on our council agenda. And it's not a problem for a resident to come in and want to say whatever they want to say to address the council. But if there's something you want to take from that and discuss with your fellow alders, then rather than taking the opportunity to do that right then and there, don't because it's not on the agenda. And so instead, you can work with staff to place that item on the agenda if that's appropriate and that's what you want to do. So I hope that helps. So I can take a short break here if anyone has any open meeting specific questions. And seeing none, I can move forward. Okay. So public records law is like the, you know, sibling of the open meetings law. Same idea, right? Except for instead of meetings, now we're talking about governmental records. The same purpose applies here. You want to shed light on the workings of government, of public officers, and of public employees. You want, the purpose of the law is also to assist members of the public in becoming more informed and provides an opportunity for public to have oversight over the workings of government. So the way public records requests work is that when the public record request is received, it's forwarded to authorities' record custodian. And who the custodian is depends on the record. In the case of your communications, you all are custodians of your own records, which will become important shortly, and we'll talk about that. And then the authority has to search for the records. Are there responsive records? And if there are, is there a statutory or a common law exemption from disclosure? And there's a number of those. And then if there is, then we, you know, that record is not disclosed. If there's not an exemption, then the authority has to apply the balancing test, which basically says, are the public's interest in favor of disclosure outweighed by the interest of not disclosing a record? And then upon completing that balancing test, the records are released with a letter explaining any redactions or any records that may be withheld and also advising the record requister of their rights to appeal that decision. So what a record is, is defined in the statute, and you can see that definition in front of you. I won't read the whole thing, but I just want to bring into your attention that records are more than just letters or emails. It can include videos. It can include presentations, such as this presentation, for instance. It can include pictures, audio recordings, things of that nature. So what is not a record are drafts, notes, and preliminary documents, materials that are published or available for sale or at a library, purely personal property, and material with some type of copyright, patent, or other protections in the law. What is a record are things that may not have been created by the authority but that are in the authority's possession. So for example, records that are created by contractors for the city. Personal records, texts and calls that are on city accounts also are records. Although I should add, generally, those would not be disclosed. They wouldn't be required to be disclosed, but they are technically records. What may also surprise you, or perhaps not, is that any kind of business emails, calls, texts, or documentations on your personal accounts also constitute records. Data in a database, social media posts, contractors' records, police body cam, and dash video, also all records. So getting back to that topic that I'd mentioned just briefly, emails that are on an authority's accounts are considered a record, even if they're personal in nature, although disclosure generally would not be required. That includes completely personal email that's sent by employees or officers. So the takeaway there is, and this is my advice, I've given it for many years, I will continue to give it, is keep your personal communications about your personal affairs on your personal email and use the city-issued email for your city-related communications. That will come in incredibly useful if, and more likely when, a public records, a request comes in that requests some records that relate to your account. Because while you are custodians of your own record, the responsibility under the law ultimately lies with you to produce those records. But I would be willing to wager that none of you would like the responsibility and the obligation and the work that is associated with producing those records. And so the city is there with the clerk's department and the IT department to step in and help identify all of those responsive records and do all of that review for you. But those records have to be on the city servers. If those records live on your phone, if those records live in your personal email, if those records live in your social media or some other messaging program, that's not really something that the city can really help you with, the city staff. And so that is something you would still carry that obligation, but you're not going to have the support of the staff. So use your city-issued emails. You will be glad you did when a record comes in because then you can just say, I don't even have to think about this if a record comes in. So what determines whether something is a record or not is essentially the content of that, not the medium. So in other words, it doesn't really matter which account it's on or whether it's a text message or an email. What matters is that what's the substance of that. Conduct careful search of all of your relevant accounts. Again, hopefully you don't have to do that because you keep all of your communication that involves city business to city accounts because then you don't really even have to, beyond just saying, oh, I'm aware that that records request came in. You really don't have to worry about it at all. Here's a brief slide, just talks about a variety of electronic records that could constitute records. Again, it's the content, not the format. So PowerPoint presentations such as this one, database files, web-based documents, audio and video, social media, cell phones, including text. One thing I want to make you aware of is that you may not have the same phone or potentially the same email account now as you might five years from now when a record request comes in. But that obligation survives the fact that you may not have access to that account, right? And so if somebody requests records and you can't access them because, again, they're on an old phone, the answer is not, well, I don't have it anymore. Might practically speaking be the answer, but now you're kind of sitting in hot water because then you've essentially destroyed records that you had an obligation to keep. So keep those records on the city servers, and then you don't have to worry about it. As I mentioned, you all are custodians of your own records. Best practices are to use your city-issued email for city business, use your personal email for your personal business, try to stay away from texts, social media for city business. That's not to say that you can't have a post on your page or that you can't communicate with each other by text, especially for purposes of coordinating a time to meet or general kind of logistical questions. But if you're, you know, if you're really discussing city business, should we or shouldn't we hire this contractor? Should we repave that road? Should we, you know, build this new park or shouldn't we? These are not communications that I would encourage you to use text or social media to talk with each other about. Or, you know, really talk with other staff as well, right? So just keep your communication to the city-issued email. Or as always, I'd like to remind you, phones still exist. You can always pick up the phone. If you don't record your conversation, then there isn't a record of it. And so you don't have an obligation to create a record And so you don't have an obligation to create a record of every communication you ever have, right? You also don't have an obligation to like make a written summary of what you discussed with somebody in person or on the phone, right? So, you know, if you have a conversation with the city administrator, you don't have to afterwards write all down everything that was said. But if you send an email, now you've created that record. So keep in mind that city business that's on your personal accounts is subject to public records requests and staff will not be able to assist the retrieval of those records. I know I've said that three times in three different ways. That's not an accident. I just really want to make sure that I drive that point home. Just, again, this is just so that it's on your radar. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yeah.
How would you relate, so like a campaign email? So I just spent three months giving everyone in my district an email that is, was for like a campaign for running for office. Now I'm using my City of Pittsburgh email. If someone emails me at that email, should I respond from my City of Pittsburgh email? Like forward it to my City of Pittsburgh email? What's the best practice there?
I think that's probably the best practice, yes.
Okay.
Now it lives on the city server and you can, yeah.
Okay, so forward, okay. And then in terms of saving records on personal things, is there a statute of limitations, is there a timeline?
Generally speaking, it's seven years.
So, okay, so throw it out with my tax returns?
Well, I can't speak to the tax returns.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So just, just a quick confirmation. Sorry, did I interrupt you, Bill? Sorry. Just to confirm, when you, when you said work email, if we are not having any political conversations or doing any city business on our work email, that is not privy to any open records laws?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So in the one slide, you included work email. And like I work with hospitals, which has, you know, we don't normally share like HIPAA compliant information or PHI in email. But just, just making sure that I understand, as long as I'm not conducting city business or talking about city business on my work email address, if something comes up and there's an open records request, my work email is not privy to that because I haven't had any city communications on it?
Right. It's not accounts specifically that are, aren't subject to requests. It's the communications. And so if a request came for Alder Vafadari's communications with, I don't know, let's say, city administrator about such and such topic, the city staff can conduct a search on the @FitchburgWI.gov account. And then the follow-up to the alder would be, well, please make sure you don't have any additional records beyond these that we've been able to identify. And that would be then on you to determine where you look for those records and where you locate them. So if there aren't any on your work email or your personal email, then there aren't any. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, along the same lines. If somebody submits a request and you say, well, I don't have any of that on my personal email or my other personal email or my work email or my other work email, whatever. If they don't believe you when you say that, what happens? Do they need to get like a search warrant?
I guess they would have to have a, not a search warrant, but they'd have to go to court and ask the court to order disclosure of records. At that point, then there would be a conversation about that those records don't exist.
It's all well and good that we keep our work and, or our, our city business separate from our personal business, separate from our work business. But still, there could be a lot of hassle if somebody requests information and says, I don't believe you don't have any information there. Prove it. Like, how do you prove a negative, right?
You can't prove a negative, absolutely. Yeah, so city staff is not going to go and look in your accounts. I mean, even if you asked us to, we are not going to do that, right? Other than the @FitchburgWI account, right? So the requesters certainly can't access that information absent, as you mentioned, a subpoena or court order. So I think there, at that point, if they didn't believe you, other than, you know, calling you names and saying you're a liar, their other recourse would be to file a complaint, file, you know, rip with the circuit court and ask the judge to order the disclosure of those records. I haven't seen that happen before, but I suppose that's, that's what would be the next.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah, well, I'd let's, let's, let's not, let's not, let's not do that. Not accepting that challenge. But to that end, I guess, and I, you know, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm just, I'm up here like boring you and telling dad jokes, but I just have to give you one more, right? Which is, and I do this every year again, so I'm really sorry. Mayor, you've been here the longest and you've heard this now like eight times. But dance like no one's watching and email like 10. There you go. Well, but we didn't used to do these, we didn't used to do these every, yeah. They, we didn't used to do these every year. It used to be every other year, so, yeah, sorry. Dance like no one's watching and email like one day your words will be read aloud in a room full of lawyers in suits during a deposition. It has happened before and it may happen again. Hopefully not to you, but just keep that in mind. You know, when you send a message, whether it's text or email or whatever, it may be, you know, jokes don't always translate, sarcasm doesn't always translate. So just be mindful of that. Your communications about city business are, by and large, with very few exceptions, are going to be open to requesters if they request them. So just keep that in mind. And that's, I'm not trying to scare you, I just, just want to make you aware. Like, that's a possibility. So just keep that in mind as you draft your messages. So that's that. So credit where credit is due, a lot of these slides are adopted from the Wisconsin Department of Justice Office of Open Government. The link is in this presentation, which I will make sure to send to all of you. And the open meeting and the public record guides that the DOJ Office of Open Government puts together are in your materials, I believe, in the agenda packet. And if not, let me know and I can send you those too. They're great resources. They're really long, but you can do a keyword search, which is really great. You also don't have to do your own research. You can always call me if you want, but they are out there and I wanted to include them because I just think they're really useful. And if ever you can't sleep, you can just read those and it'll take like four minutes, you'll be out flat. Money-back guarantee on that. So with that, unless you have more questions about records requests, I can move on a bit to conflicts and ethics. Shall we? Okay. So the idea, you know, there's, there's a state law and there's also some ordinances that we have that apply here. But the big picture here is that public officials should not ever use their public position in office to obtain something of financial gain or anything of substantial value for their private benefit or for the benefit of their immediate family or an organization that they're associated with. So you can't enrich yourself by virtue of being a common council member. The definition of what an associate organization is here in the slide, but it basically just means that you're either a director or an officer or a member of your immediate family, is a director, an officer, a trustee, or you own or control 10 outstanding equity, 10% of outstanding equity, or you act as an authorized agent. So in other words, it's, it's, it's not just like a company, you know, an organization that you volunteer for on occasion. There's, there's a level of involvement there beyond just, or a company that you work for. There's also some ordinances that talk about incompatible activities and that address conflict of interest as well as an ordinance, that's ordinance 14-31. And it says that you can't engage in any business or transaction or can't have any financial or personal interest, direct or indirect, that's incompatible with the proper discharge of your official duties. So there's also an ordinance that talks about disclosure of confidential information that prohibits you as well as employees from disclosing confidential information to advance the financial or other private interests of yourself or the employee or whoever that, doing the disclosure. So just something to keep in mind. This really largely applies to kind of information that you might come into contact with, either via closed session or some other confidential communication that you receive as a member of this body. We also have an ordinance that deals with gifts with regard to accepting gifts, which largely is, you know, don't accept gifts that you receive as a, because of your position in office. The example I like to give for that is that, you know, if somebody, like a developer, somebody else wants to, you know, take you out to a fancy dinner or, you know, take you on a trip to Hawaii, that's a no-no. But, but if you're at Costco, right? Because they're not just doing that because, you know, they like you or they do that to everyone. It's probably because you have some power here on this body, right? But if you're at Costco and they're handing out samples to like everyone, right? You can absolutely take the sample. In fact, you can take several. I know this because I have kids and we take several. And it's okay, I've asked. It's not just Costco and samples, right? So similar with like events, if you're at an event and let's say there's a ribbon cutting and they're handing out pens or stress balls or whatever it is, so long as you're not given this item because you're an alder, if lots of members of the community are invited and they're also getting stress balls and pens, really not a big concern. But if you're getting this favor and this gift because of your position as an elected official, that's, you know, that's the problem. So we have an event attendance ordinance that we've had for a number of years now, which essentially recognizes that there are certain types of events that you are absolutely encouraged to attend, that they're found in the public interest for you as well as employees to attend, which are ribbon cuttings, grand openings, seminars, workshops, conferences, the Fitchburg Business Appreciation Lunches, et cetera. And at those, you can accept food and beverages that are incidentally served as well as small items such as cups, t-shirts of nominal value. And this is consistent with the Department of Justice Ethics Opinions as well. So nominal value is kind of the big question there. I should add, I did put a number of ethics opinions about gifts in the, in that packet that I mentioned. It's, so there's, you'll see like a letter from me and a couple of short things and then two large guides from the DOJ. And then at the kind of the end, as an appendix, if you will, there's some ethics opinions. Peruse at your, you know, pleasure or don't, but just call me if you have a question. Again, as I mentioned, the purpose of this conversation really is just to get these things on your radar so then if something comes up, you can go, ah, I remember, this may or may not be a problem. Let's call Valerie. So all of chapter 14, I believe, is in your materials. Oh, I forgot to mention recusal. So if you ever reach a situation where you have a conflict of interest, we can go back to this. You, for whatever reason, let's say, an organization that you're associated with or your husband owns a business that's bidding on something in, by a city contractor, something of that nature, then what you would want to do in that situation is, because you have a conflict of interest, is recuse yourself from participating. And when you recuse yourself, you really want to make sure that you abstain from any participation in any of the discussions. So that means don't just not vote, don't discuss it, don't participate. As early as you know that you might be involved. If you know ahead of time that you, you know, you may have a conflict, step away even from talking about referring the item out, if you will, right? Just say, I have a conflict here, I'm stepping out. Step out of the room. Or if you sit in the room, just, you know, don't make eye contact, don't talk about it. Just, you're not involved, right? You don't want to be participating in discussing the merits of something, but then say, well, I didn't vote on it, so it's okay. Just step out of it as if you're not there at all for that particular item. It doesn't mean, oh, you can't serve in the council anymore. Just you can't participate in that particular item that you have a conflict for. So as far as gifts, again, ask yourself, the big question is, are they being offered to you because of your position on the council? Decline if yes. Okay to accept if they're offered to the community at large. As always, call me if you want to talk more. So any questions about that? All right, then this next slide is a long one. I'm not going to read it aloud, but I will just give you a little bit of background. We have a new ordinance as of last year that this is, this list lives in the ordinance that talks about the city attorney position, what my role is and what my duties are. And this, not this body, because of course we have several new members, but the prior council adopted this ordinance. And the background for it is this. There is recently an ethics opinion that came from the American Bar Association that basically said that attorneys have to obtain informed consent from their clients before engaging in, participating in kind of like listservs or other types of large, you know, group communication. If they're going to disclose information that is confidential, specifically including who their client is, which can make sense in a lot of situations, right? Because if you're asking questions and you tell somebody you're somebody's attorney, now you're disclosing that that somebody has an attorney and now you're asking about that topic. It makes a lot less sense in the context of a city attorney of the City of Fitchburg asking a question of other city attorneys on a listserv. Hey, what do you guys do? Do you have an ordinance like this, do you not? For a long time, I think the, the understanding was that it didn't really apply in those situations. But the ABA come out and said, well, actually it does because you're still disclosing your identity. Well, of course I'm disclosing my identity, or the identity of your client. Anytime I ask a question, I disclose the identity of my client. I'm the City of Fitchburg City Attorney. So in short, this came up last year and on the aforementioned weekly league of Wisconsin municipalities attorney call, we all kind of talked about it and decided, various attorneys decided to handle it differently. Some had resolutions, some said, this doesn't make sense. We're not going to do anything about it. And a number said, let's just pass an ordinance that says, okay, the common council is now aware that, and I'd like to tell you, that on a almost most weekly basis that I participate in a League of Wisconsin Municipalities sponsored conference call where we kind of talk about general issues and what we're seeing, topics that come up in municipal law, alcohol licensing, you know, police body cam, open records requests come up frequently. Hey, did anyone get this kind of record request? Have you, you know, have you considered this? You know, the most recent one that came up was, oh, somebody requested a full listing of all the city employee email addresses. Has anyone received a record such as this? And then, you know, the attorneys kind of go back and forth. It's an, it's an invaluable resource. I've been very glad to be able to participate that by virtue of the City of Fitchburg's membership in the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And I had asked the previous council for informed consent to allow me to continue to do that and to continue to disclose the identity of my client, which is the City of Fitchburg. And so that's, that's the purpose of this ordinance. The reason I'm telling you about it is because consent has to be informed. And so the former council, of course, knew about it because they adopted the ordinance. But we have several new members now, so I'm letting you know. So then the event that at some point the council were to say, well, we don't give consent anymore, then you can of course repeal the ordinance if you wanted to do that. I'd ask you not to do that, but I'm informing you of this. And so the slide will be on every, unfortunately, presentation moving forward so that that consent continues to be informed, so you're aware of it. So with that, a bit about Robert, who? General Henry Martin Robert, who was a distinguished engineer and first codified his rules in 1876. I think we're now in 12th edition, might be up to 13th now. We adopted the 10th edition of Robert's Rules in ordinance 4-24. So our meetings are run generally under the Robert's Rules of Order, although we have some exceptions or some deviations, if you will, in our ordinances. But the purpose of Robert's Rules really is to help run meetings efficiently. It is to protect the rights of the majority and the minority as well as individual and, individual members and absent members. And it's kind of a careful balance to allow action, but also in some cases to stop something from happening. Here's our ordinance 4-24, which says that the common council rules shall be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order to 2000, 10th edition, that was adopted in the year 2000, except to the extent that it is contradicted in any of the ordinances, then our ordinances rule. In addition, the debate rules are modified so that each alder, when recognized, is able to speak on an issue each time they're recognized by the chairperson, but they're limited to five minutes each time that they're recognized, except for the annual budget meeting, which has its own rules. We'll talk about that way later, like in October. So there are many resources for Robert's Rules. If you have no familiarity with them, there are a lot of kind of beginner, you know, Robert's Rules for Dummies type books out there and resources. There are a few resources in your materials as well. But the big picture is here is that we maintain, we, we use these to maintain decorum, right? Because these are governmental meetings. They're not supposed to be like so complicated and fancy that people can't understand what's happening. But we do need some form of process so that not everybody doesn't speak at once, that you have to wait to be recognized by the chair. And certainly, and I don't expect this will be a problem, but keep in mind, Robert's Rules of Order and also common decency requires you to abstain from, for example, personal attacks, right? So you're absolutely allowed to vehemently disagree with each other with regard to policy decisions or, you know, what you think the best course of action on something may be. But it needs to really, your comments need to be focused on the, the topics on the agenda and not the individual people who are moving them forward, if that makes sense. So with that, here's a handy dandy sheet of 20, oops, most common motions. I love this cheat sheet. It's in your materials. I use it a lot. I hope you find it useful as well. Not here in this presentation, I just wanted to put a picture of it in here so you know what to look for in the packet. That's all I have, believe it or not, I feel like I've been talking forever, so I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions about anything else that I said or anything that I haven't said that you'd like me to talk about? If not, I will just close again with, and I know I said this before, but please do not hesitate to contact me. You know, call anytime, send me an email, whatever you prefer. I'm happy to assist. I will either gladly tell you the answer or research it and get back to you, but my door is always open. Thank you very much.
Valerie, could I ask one quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
So social media, you know, Mike had kind of mentioned this before with campaigning and, you know, you've got a campaign email and now the Fitchburg dot, FitchburgWI.gov email and, you know, personal Facebook, you know. So I was reading through and I saw that, you know, if I use my personal Facebook for city business, obviously that opens it up to some of the complications that you outlined earlier. Would it be recommended then to have, like, keep those, those kind of, that church-state line, for lack of a better word, you know, campaign, personal, and then governmental and have like all those separate accounts, which would certainly be a hassle for maintaining, but also would be easier for, if there were to be questions down the road?
Well, I mean, ultimately, that's up to you. You know, campaigning isn't really city business. So that's like your own personal thing you did to get here. So I recognize that it's like part of becoming a council member, right? But it isn't part of city business. So with regard to posts that you post that pertain to city business but that you post not, you know, as an individual, but as like an alder, I don't know, ultimately, I think my question would be less about which account you posted on and more about how are you backing those up and saving them in the event you need them? And I know the city has some software that does that. I'm sure software's out there, but that would be my concern. I mean, in theory, they're all on there on Facebook servers. But my worry would be, what happens if the server's down and now you can't produce that record? So that's why I'm wary of social media. I'm not going to tell you not to use it because I, you know, I don't live under a rock and I understand that, right? Facebook's here, I don't know, TikTok, whatever, Twitter, Instagram.[1795.05] Facebook's here, I don't know, TikTok, whatever, Twitter, Instagram, they're all out there, people use it to communicate, I get that, but just something to be mindful of.
I will recommend that you use your social media, like, you know, I have Julia for Mayor, something like that, but I use only to inform, inform, you know, I, I share stuff from the city, Facebook, you know, I don't use it to make comments, you know what I mean, to avoid the noise and all this in the dark, you know. So I use it all to, more to inform about meetings, activity that the city's doing, you know, we are working on the budget, we're the CIP, you know, use it for that. My recommendation, to avoid a lot of other things.
All right, thank you both.
You bet. Did I miss anything, Chad?
No.
You're still awake. I'm doing great. Okay, everyone is still awake, I will consider that a win. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Valerie.
introduce myself here, as most of you, if not really all of you, know. My name is Chad Breckland, and I'm the city administrator. You can see my contact information listed here, and then I also have included an updated photo of the deputy city administrator for the mayor, and his contact information as well. So we'll give Lisa Sanford credit for updating both of those photos. No, but I did have this shirt on, yes. There was a bit of an irony, I realized today, as I got to work and was reviewing my presentation, that yes, there is an irony in the fact that I wore the same shirt, not by, not planned. So the presentation this evening will cover the following topics. We'll do an overview of the departments and their staffing, department heads and staff, as well as kind of their roles and responsibilities. What does an agenda look like and the information contained therein? We'll talk about city council meetings and some resources that are available for you as alders. We'll talk about the role of the city council, alder conduct, and then committees, commissions, and boards. We'll have time at the end for questions, but of course, if you have any questions as I'm going through the presentation, by all means, feel free to let me know, and we can take those questions at that time. I will indicate that this is, I believe, the fourth time that I've given this presentation, and it has evolved each and every year since I've been in this role and been meeting with common council to do the orientation. If there's something that has been missed, or you think should be included, or maybe some things that we don't need to include, I am certainly open to that feedback. Just reach out, email, give me a phone call, whatever the case may be, and the same applies for the council handbook that has just been emailed to you earlier this evening as well. This is actually the first year that we've had a common council member handbook, which again, both of these docs, the presentation, as well as the handbook, is meant to serve as guides as you navigate your roles as elected officials here in the community. So, overview of department staffing, you can see all of our departments are listed here on the right-hand slide, our portion of the slide, and our approximate full-time employee head count is 195 employees. I actually think that's grown a little bit closer to 200, but I think this is the actual active number of positions that are filled right now. I think we have currently three or four vacancies in the police department, and one other full-time vacancy in the city, so we actually don't have a lot of current positions open. You can see on this slide that this is an organizational structure of the city, you'll see that the residents of the city are at the top of the organizational structure, they elect the common council, the mayor, and the municipal judge, and then you can see the mayor's direct reports, those include me, Valerie, the city attorney, as well as the police and fire chief. And then the direct reports below are all of our city departments, and you can see how those are all breaking out, so you can see who reports directly to me, and then you can see the departments that report directly to the deputy city administrator. There are a total of 17 departments in the city, as I mentioned, four of them report directly to the mayor, police, fire, legal, and administration. Six report directly to me, and of course, I do have responsibility for the seven that also report to the deputy city administrator. The deputy city administrator position was added a couple of years ago, and prior to that, the city administrator had all, all 13 of those departments reporting directly to them, and that was something that was certainly not sustainable for any period of time, particularly as the city has only grown and become more complex to operate. And then, of course, municipal court reports directly to the municipal judge. The city has a handbook on its website, and all of the departments are described within that handbook, it's located in pages 11 through 13. I also want to mention that the city is served by an EMS district, specifically the Fitchrona EMS district, and that consists of the cities of Pittsburgh and Verona, as well as the township of Verona. And one other little piece of information I want to ensure everyone is aware of, particularly our new common council members, is our police department shares a joint records management system and other information systems through the multi-jurisdictional public safety information systems commission, and we participate in this with the cities of Pittsburgh, Sun Prairie, Middleton, Manona, and Verona, and that collaboration has been ongoing, thinking for probably about 20 years at this point, it's been, been quite successful. Our city department heads and staff are all trained and experienced professionals in their field, they are responsible for carrying out the day-to-day operations and the policy direction of the common council. You are encouraged to contact our department heads to learn more about their operations, what might be going well in their particular department, what do they see as areas of improvement, what sorts of operational considerations that you may wish to be aware of, or that they may wish to share, perhaps the existing process and or functions of the department, any proposals for new programs and initiatives, and proposals for new ordinances. And if you are thinking about modifying ordinances, or proposing new programs or initiatives, I would certainly encourage you to reach out to the departments that may be affected, and talk to the department heads, and learn more about how those things may potentially impact their operations, and, and seek their feedback. All city staff certainly act and make recommendations to the common council in the best interests of the city. That is our responsibility, and what we're hired to do is act in the best interests of what the city is. And if you do reach out to department heads or city staff, Adam and I do ask that you please include us in your email correspondence, just as a courtesy, so that we're aware of the communications, particularly in case an employee would come to us with questions or, or seeking information. I'll just pause briefly for any questions before moving on to city council meetings. So city council meetings are held the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. As mentioned last evening, the time to start the common council meetings will be changing with our next one on May 13, and that will be at 6:30 PM. Generally speaking, the first meeting in July and the second meeting in December are not held due to their proximity to holidays. And then the committee of the whole is the fourth Wednesday of the month. The council president sets the agenda for the committee of the whole, and also determines the start time. We have historically begun the committee of the whole at 7, although council president Gerhart has in the past adjusted that time, and I don't know if you have any plans to do that moving forward, but we'll be sure to communicate that if you do. A quorum of common council members is six alders, I believe Valerie covered that briefly in her presentation. We do need six members present in order to conduct a common council meeting. If you are going to be absent from a common council meeting, the committee of the whole, or committee commissioner board meeting, we do ask that you notify the mayor, the council president, city clerk, or city administrator in the form, in the case of a council meeting or committee of the whole, or the chair of the respective committee commissioner board that you may not be able to attend. Agendas for common council meeting are posted to the city's website on the Friday before the meeting, so for the meeting that was held last night, the meeting agenda was posted to the city's website the previous Friday. The purpose of the agenda is to provide structure and facilitate an efficient and effective use of meeting time. The common council meetings are the, I guess, the governing board's opportunity to carry out the business of the city, and of course, the purpose of that agenda is to make that time as efficient as possible. Oftentimes, there are, obviously, our elected officials are there, and you may be coming from day jobs, city staff is there, and then it's also important to recognize that community members, developers, and others may be present as well, so we try to keep the meetings, generally speaking, as efficient as reasonably possible. The agenda is also needed to satisfy the subject matter and notice requirements of Wisconsin's open meetings law, and if a subject is not on the agenda, it cannot lawfully be discussed or acted upon during a common council meeting, or committee and commission meeting for that matter. What you'll see in agenda packet is a number of items related to each agenda item, there'll be a referral sheet, which will oftentimes have a brief overview or background of the specific agenda item. You'll also see supporting documents, which include many different things, but some examples might be permit and license applications, development plans, contracts, staff memos, quotes, or bids for projects, those sorts of things. In some cases, you may see a staff recommendation on how to proceed, we don't require that from staff, it's an optional item to list on the referral sheet. And then, of course, the resolution, you'll see, that's the document that has typically all the whereas clauses, and the now, therefore be it resolved at the end, which really is the direction given by the common council, or the action that was approved by the common council. If you have any questions or clarifications in regards to anything on the agenda, I suggest you reach out to either me or the department head, who has responsibility for that particular agenda item in advance of the meeting, that allows them an opportunity to gather the information that you may be seeking, and to be able to clearly answer that question during the meeting, instead of needing to get back to you at a later time. How do items get added to an agenda? The mayor sets the agenda, and I work with her and, and city staff to get the agenda set. There's also another option available, if two alders would like an item placed on the agenda, they may work together to have that done. There can also be a formal motion by the common council as a whole directing an item to be placed on the agenda. If you do want agenda items placed on, or items placed on the agenda, please have those submitted to city staff by noon on the Wednesday before the meeting. Our city staff are required to have their items submitted for agenda review and approval at the same time, that just gives the staff who are responsible for reviewing and publishing the agenda a bit of time to get that done, particularly in case there's any questions or adjustments that may need to be made in advance of getting that posted on Fridays. And then again, feel free to reach out to me, the deputy city administrator, Adam, or department heads, with any questions or requests for assistance, perspective, et cetera. There is an item on the agenda every meeting called the consent agenda, that has routine matters, only a single motion, which is seconded and adopted by a majority of vote to approve or adopt all of the matters on the consent agenda. Typically, in most cases, that's the referrals out to committees or commissions. Alders may request removal of an item on the consent agenda, so that it can be separately discussed and acted upon. Obviously, Alder Reich said you had done that last night with the meeting, that's obviously something that is perfectly acceptable and happens on occasion. Generally speaking, all items that are on the agenda, or most of the items on the agenda, go through a standard referral process, that means that they are referred on one meeting of the common council, no action is taken on them, but they are referred to committees, commissions, or boards as necessary, and then they will come back to the common council at a later date, typically two weeks from the time in which they were referred, depending upon how many committees, commissions, or boards the item was going to, and when those bodies meet. There also is a section for direct referrals on the agenda, those are items that are referred directly to common council for action at that particular meeting. So for instance, we work with the mayor to get direct approvals, direct referrals approved, staff is not authorized to just arbitrarily decide if something is going to be a direct referral or not, that must be approved by the mayor. And usually, when those items are requested for direct referral, there's likely a time sensitivity to them, or some other basis as to why the standard referral process is not being utilized. We all have, we always have on our common council agendas a public comment period on non-agenda items. Members of the public can provide comments on items that are not specifically listed on the agenda, and of course, as always, they can comment on specific agenda items as well. The comments are limited to three minutes, that also applies to committees and commissions, generally speaking, the chair of the meeting can set that time, and in some cases, that could be appropriate to reduce the time from three minutes if there are a number of people who are wishing to speak. No discussion between those presenting or making comments from the, by, as members of the public should occur with the body, that's largely because the item has not been agended, and therefore, no discussion should occur. If the council has an interest to discuss a topic further, then the topic should be added to a future agenda, and you can work through city staff, the mayor, or as two alders to direct that information to be put on an agenda. Some of the resources available to the common council, you have a city emailed issue, city issued email account, obviously, the city attorney has offered her recommendation that you utilize that city email account for all of your business that you are conducting regarding the city. You can contact our IT department with any questions that you may have in regards to that email account, and if you need to reset your password, that is an automated process using Office 365. I would encourage you to sign up for notifications on the city website, I will see if my link is working here real quickly, it is. If you go to the city's website and you click on the notify me button on the left-hand side, you can enter your email address or a cell phone number, and then sign up to receive notifications on any variety of different topics that are listed here as I scroll through. So one of the things that you may find helpful is that whenever an agenda is posted, for instance, you can get an alert that that's been posted, so you don't necessarily have to always go out and check. Yeah.
Is this list updated? Because, you know, like, you know, because you had shared Dry Stormwater project, that one is project is complete.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
It is periodically updated, but clearly there is going to be a couple of projects that, that needs, that could be removed, and you're, and you're right, that is one of them that could be removed. Yeah, every, every several months, we'll go through and we'll ask departments to just double-check that list to make sure it's updated, and clearly, we might be a little bit past a few months with the Shore Drive Stormwater having been done. And then there's a section down here, I'll get down, but there is, also should be for signing up for media updates as well, so anytime a city press release goes out, it's going to be under, under news flash. So if you go to news flash, then you can sign up to receive media releases as well.
There is a news, I don't think that I have it.
Chad?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a suggestion here.
Sure.
Because, as you mentioned, this is updated every so often, people need to go back and revisit this, and... People need to go back and revisit this and see if there's anything new that they want to subscribe to. Could there be a notification regarding the notify me list that says, hey, these things are new? So that, you know, rather than just saying something changed, well, first of all, letting people know that something changed is awesome, letting them know exactly what changed so that they can see the needles rather than the entire haystack would be even better.
Yeah. Yeah, I can offer that suggestion. I would think that that would be feasible.
Chad, I also wanted to ask too, because I was sharing this with somebody, and I, I signed up for a ton of these, so I don't know what I, I get them all to my same text message, so I, I have no idea which ones I've signed up for at this point, but if someone just wants the news flashes, I actually am not 100% clear which one it is, and so I don't know if it's possible to, I think it's, oh, news flash. City of Pittsburgh News.
Yep. City of Pittsburgh News is pretty much anything the city puts out. I believe the fire department has specific, and you can see general, and then police would have one as well. So there's, there's a number of options.
I don't know if it's possible to just like, favorites. Number one, you know, just to like, let people know, because it is kind of an intimidating list.
Sure.
And I think there's a ton of people that want to have, sign up for a ton, and there's a ton of people that might just be, I just want the basic things, and might not, that's pretty buried on the page, so.
So what you're suggesting perhaps is maybe we move news flash up farther.
Yeah, like, this is the number three top, you know, information for the city that you should sign up for.
Yeah, I'm guessing that this probably violates best practices of webpage creation to have to scroll down like 20 times to get to news alerts. I mean, I'm certainly not in the IT world, but I'm going to guess that that's probably not the.
Yeah, it's kind of like we need a communications director.
So I think if you click on the little triangle, that will close up the list, the little triangle immediately left to notify me.
Yeah, that will at least close it.
So then you can, yeah.
I know that because you're in that industry.
Yeah, I guess the other thing you could do is make it so that the default, when you get to this page, is that they're all closed like this, and you put a big thing, a big message on there that says to see the details, click here.
Oh, okay, it could be another option. Yeah, I know what you're saying. Defaulted collapsed accordion would be a really good idea.
Speaking from somebody who works in the IT industry?
That's right. That's my official best practice recommendation.
But these news flashes are outstanding. I always recommend when people say they don't hear what's happening in the city, I say, please sign up for this, because I, I just get a text message, and it's super easy to get to the website. So they're really, really functional as, once you sign up for them, so I appreciate it.
For another conversation, sorry, Scott, is how do we tell the neighbor that we, that we have notified me?
Right.
You know, that one is key.
Yep.
I don't know.
You are absolutely correct, and we're always searching for additional ways in which to make sure we're getting that information out, that people can go and sign up. We were just talking, I forget what the communication was that we were thinking about sending out, but, you know, can we get a QR code on that communication that would take people directly to this page, you know, staying up to date? I'm going to, I'm feeling like that's going to be more or less a regular component of any city communication that goes out, just as a matter of routine, to continue to try to find ways to get that out, because yes, we hear regularly that, you know, folks weren't aware of something that was going on in the city, and there are ways in which to rather easily get that, but we need to do more to make sure that we get the information to people on how to, how to sign up for that, so.
Chad, do we include any sort of, like, a QR code or anything that says, hey, notify me exists, this is a really great tool? Do we put that in like property tax bills or anything?
That's what we're, we're looking to implement is pretty, nearly any city communication that goes out, it would just have that standard QR code that, you know, stay informed, you know, scan the code, and then it would take you basically to this page that would allow you to pick the subscriptions or notify me or news alerts that you'd want.
It's created tomorrow, you know, so provide to the, to the neighbors. We should have that ready to go.
Any other comments on notifications? No? All right. So then again, we've pretty much talked about, you know, the fact that agendas, news releases, project informations, other alerts are in the notify me section. Obviously, city staff is a resource available to the common council. The handbook that you've been provided is again a resource, and then we'll talk about the League of Wisconsin Municipalities training. I think I might have a little bit more information about this later, but in the event I don't, I'll cover this right now. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I emailed that just before the meeting started, or just after the meeting. So you should have both my presentation as well as the handbook in your emails. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities is an organization that we belong to, and I think perhaps nearly all municipalities in the state of Wisconsin are members of the league. And they do provide a lot of information that we utilize to stay informed about legislation. They offer training, and they offer advocacy on behalf of municipalities. The handouts that I provided to you this evening, they come from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. They do offer training sessions for elected officials. I believe Mayor Aratafrada recently forwarded an email newsletter from them that contains some information about some upcoming sessions. You are encouraged to register for those. If you do want to attend some training, we do have a small amount of money that's budgeted each year for common council training and seminars. Just reach out to me and, or the mayor, and we'll point you in the right direction on how to, how to accomplish getting registered for those things and handle the internal processes associated with using those funds. One of the things that the league has recently done, working with our own Fact TV, is creating a video one-on-one series. We are in the process of getting subscriptions for all of you that would allow you to view this video series. I think it's about 10 videos, and I don't think any of the videos are longer than five or six minutes, so in total, it's about an hour or so of time, if my recollection is correct. But it is actually a really good introduction to local government that I think is valuable for all of us to look at periodically. So we will be sending an email with the login information for each of you in the next week or two, and again, we would encourage you to take some time, recognizing you all are busy, to take a look at those particular videos. And then next, there is a council resources webpage that did not exactly link correctly, but I will say it did find it right here on the left-hand side of the council resources. So there's all kinds of things that we have in here, whether it's the Alder District Map, financial audits, capital improvement plan, links to other plans, like the comprehensive plan, TID project plans. We also have links to past presentations, which appears to need to be updated as well, union contracts and so forth. If there's something that's not in here or that you cannot find on the city website, which sometimes it's not always easy to find things on the city's website that we might think are obvious, having had that experience, and I know a number of you have had that experience as well, let me know, and we'll look to find that for you and get you what you're looking for, and also try to make updates to the web to make it easier to locate.
For our new council members, the Operational and Organizational Review 2024 is something that I think is a really important document. It was a analysis by Baker Tilly about the staffing needs of the city, and I think it's a really important document to help prioritize budget, because before we didn't, before we had that, we had no idea how to prioritize the different staff positions that were needed. So it's really important. It doesn't really get at fire, police, or EMS, none of our public safety, but it gets at the rest of the city, and I highly recommend taking a look at it.
Chad?
Yes.
As long as we're talking about the city website, I'll just put in a reminder that all of the committees, commissions, and boards need to be updated.
With the new members.
With the new members, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I was going to say something a few weeks ago, but I figured I'd wait till now.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'll confirm that that's on the IT, IT work order list. Typically, it's something that would be standing on their list, but we'll definitely make sure we get that updated. I will send a link to the org study that Alder Gerhart mentioned to you guys this evening, so you also have that right away in your email inboxes. Again, here's just another list of some of those plans and so forth that are out there on the city website. So how is the common council and the associated activities determined? Well, our City of Pittsburgh ordinances define roles in the form of government and so forth. So the City of Pittsburgh's form of government is defined under Section 4-1 of the municipal ordinances, and all of the municipal ordinances are located on the city's website. Composition of the common council, the rules of the common council, what defines quorum, what are the powers of the common council, and the standing committees, which specifically are the committee of the whole, finance, personnel, public safety, and human services. I won't go into each of these specific ordinances this evening, but I at least wanted to identify those, so the, in the event you have questions on, you know, what are the powers of the city council, you can go to ordinance 4-33 and take a look at that. So committees, commissions, and boards, those are all identified in Chapter 6 of Pittsburgh ordinances. The vast majority of them are advisory to the common council or another committee or commission, and do not have authority to pass legislation, set policy, or direct staff. There is a staff contact assigned to each committee commissioner board, and the staff contacts were provided with a guide, guidelines last year. I believe we were able to implement that as well to help provide some information on how to staff a particular commission, commission, committee commissioner board. I would encourage you to speak with the staff contact for the committees, commissions, or boards that you are on for information on current activities or items. You should also be receiving an email welcoming you in the next week or two from each of those particular staff contacts. I mentioned to our department heads at the meeting on Tuesday if they could take care of sending those emails out or directing their staff that they work with to send those emails out. We'd also ask that committees, commissions, and boards recognize and assess whether programs, initiatives, and ordinances that they may wish to implement have an impact on city operations and finances, a disparate impact on others, or unintended consequences if not fully vetted. Your role as an alder, as well as your conduct, your individual role lies within your vote. Independently, you lack authority. You must act as a body and work together with your fellow alders to adopt rules, policies, resolutions, ordinances, and set priorities at published and accessible public meetings. It would be improper and potentially illegal to unilaterally order or direct staff to do something you specifically want or to represent the city's interests or position when not authorized to do so. As you can imagine, as an elected official in, in any community, especially a growing community like Pittsburgh, your responsibility is significant. You are elected to make decisions on behalf of the residents of the city, and those decisions may impact our community for decades in the future. It is expected that you'll comply with ethics laws, be aware of conflicts of interest, comply with open records laws, and opens, open meetings laws. I'm not going to get into that. Obviously, Valerie spent some time on that earlier in the evening, and she would be much more of a subject matter expert on those topics than I am anyway. As it relates to conduct, obviously, there's an expectation of respect and treating each other with respect, as well as treating members of the public and staff with respect. Disagreement and debate are healthy components of democracy, but respect, again, is important in all of our interactions. Demeaning, sarcastic, telling others how to do something, or other unprofessional behaviors are not productive and should not be accepted by the common council. Also, we ask that you do not involve staff into political matters to the best extent possible, and recognize that the way in which business can be conducted at common councils can impact the city's employment, recruitment, and retention efforts. The golden rule is important here. Treat others as you would want to be treated, and your actions and conduct set the tone for not just our organization, but our community as a whole. Closing, and then if there are any questions, we can certainly answer those. I would encourage you to take and do some ride-alongs with our police and fire departments, specifically. There would also potentially be opportunities to coordinate a ride-along with our EMS district, and maybe even with our parks or public works departments as well. Just reach out to the prospective department heads and ask some questions and work to make those arrangements. If you need any assistance with any of that, I'm happy to help as well. Feel free to reach out to me, the city attorney, the deputy city administrator, or department heads with any questions you may have regarding city operations, or if you're looking for any background or history on anything. We've talked about the notify me and how the city communicates. There are a number of ways in which we do that, through our social media channels, our city website, through the notify me. We're also looking for additional ways to enhance our communication. We know that that is an area where we can do better, and we are continuing to look at ways to try to do better, and perhaps even either add or realign our roles and responsibilities to help improve that. I will again reference the League of Wisconsin Municipalities training for elected officials. If you do see something out on their website or within their resources, let me know, reach out, and we'll do what we can to get you either into some training or accessing the materials. That is referencing the supplemental materials that I've handed out this evening, the pocket guides on ethics in open meetings, as well as the, so you've been elected, and it's the now what handbook. And I want to thank all of you for your willingness to step up and serve your community. It's not always easy to be in leadership roles such as elected officials. While the vast majority of decisions may not necessarily create any sorts of controversy or real significant debate, there will always be something that will come up during the course of your terms that will be quite important to our community and may be very difficult for you to navigate. Again, city staff is here to help you navigate those situations to the best extent we can, and we encourage you to just reach out and have conversations and learn more about what's happening in the city. And with that, I will just open it up to any other questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
For the handbook, the last page say that we need to sign this and give it to you? Is this, do we need to do that?
I will actually just, I'm just going to print this page, and I'll just come by at one of the next common council meetings.
Okay, and we can sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Exactly. That's how I'll do that.
Okay, no, that one's good.
Absolutely.
So the other thing that I want to mention to the new council members and to, you know, existing ones, that, you know, you can set up a meeting with Fact TV and have an interview, and also meet with them if you want to share stuff from your district, what is going on in your district. They are always looking for, you know, to have an interview with you, so take advantage of that. I do ones, I do one, one, every month, I have one. But Jeremy is always looking for, for you guys to be interviewed, okay? So take advantage of that. Because you're new, I would recommend you to have one, so, so you can introduce to the community who you are, where you run, what are your passions, you know, all of that stuff, so they get to know to you. And then you can set a one maybe quarterly and discuss about what is going on in your district, you know what I mean? To all of you. Okay, so that one. The other thing that I want to say is, what I always say is, you know, Chad mentioned about sometime we are going to have to make difficult decision, and this is what we run. We run to make difficult decision. Otherwise, Chad and her team can run the city. You know what I mean? But we are, you know, and so be aware of that, you know? And so my other... And so my other advice to you that I'm going to give you that was provided to me when I ran is, you know, always come prepared to the meeting, read the package, because, you know what I mean? So, and ask questions, you know, and ask questions, because sometime maybe you know the answer, but remember that you are representing 8,000 people, and maybe you ask a question to clarify some topic, you know, initiative, ask a question, even you know, but sometime, you know, you can say, you ask a question for all the people that you are representing, because those people are watching, and I say, why are you even ask question? So, and come prepared to the meeting, read the packet. Sometime the packet contain...
How many pages, Bill? Sometime? 1,000?
I believe our record is a little over 1,100.
But, you know, but also I would say that, you know, for the Plan Commission meetings, there is a memo that they start putting together. I would recommend you to read that memo first and then go, because in that memo contains everything, and it's almost eight, nine pages instead of reading 300 pages, you know what I mean? That one is my recommendation, you know, use that memo. It's a very good memo. What else? And ask questions, you know, be curious, don't be afraid to ask questions, and if, always, because we are being, this is what Chad said, I want to tell you something that I learned. Not only that our residents are watching us, also people that they want to invest in our city. So remember that. So if we, they see that we are disorganized, disrespect each other, disrespect staff, you know? Do you think that they would like to come to do business with us? No. So, you know what I mean? So if you have something that maybe you are, something that I say that you want to talk to me, don't use, don't do it in front of the camera, because we are portraying who we are. So you have an issue with any of your council member or you disagree with staff, do it in private. This is my recommendation. And treat the staff with respect, because staff people are watching our meeting too. Okay? So that one are my recommendations as a mayor.
I'd like to add a couple of things, too. That Plan Commission memo is very important. Staff now includes it after the referral sheet with all the Plan Commission items. That was not happened before. I did not see that memo for the first two years I was on council, so it is very, very useful, especially because plan items can be so complicated. Also, as Finance Chair, we do have several special finance meetings throughout the year, and they are not required for anyone outside of the Finance Committee. However, every council member should attend them, because they are so important to understand the city operations. The CIP process and the budget process are so essential, especially your first time round, because it's a lot to absorb, and the more you absorb it the first time, the easier it is the second time round. So highly, highly recommend. I've been on Finance for five years now. Also, I think you should see your other council members as a resource, so please feel free to reach out to me as someone that's been on Finance, as somebody that's been the Council President. I'm happy to guide you in that way. And that goes for anyone in the public as well. If anyone in the public wants to know more about how the Finance Committee works, how the budget works, I know the mayor would be delighted to meet with you. I would be delighted to meet with you. Please let us know. I would be happy to do that. The other thing that's not really codified anywhere, but I think, I personally think is a responsibility of the council members, is to, when you come to council and you're doing your commission reports, I don't think it's just about reading off the resolutions and moving those and talking about them. I think it also involves bringing a summary of the meeting. And that doesn't mean saying every single thing that happened, because not every single thing that happened in a meeting is necessarily relevant for the council, but you sit in those meetings, I sit in hours of meetings, and I think part of my role is to bring it back to the rest of the council and synthesize what I gleaned from that and recommend any conversations I think should be visited by the council members through watching on video. So I think that's an important role. I also think your role as a committee member is to bring things that are happening on council to the commissions, because the committee members do not always watch every meeting, nor should they. I, you know, I don't, I love when people watch the meetings, but I don't necessarily recommend it. They're very long, so I think that that doesn't always happen enough. I honestly think that every council committee agenda that has an alder sitting on the committee should have a council report. I think that should be standard. I think everyone, there should be an opportunity for at least the council member to at least revisit the resolutions that they passed and what happened. And that's not something that always happens, but I think it's something that you can take upon yourself to bring to the committees. And I think it's, maybe it's something we should be, I don't know if you can codify it, but you can say that this is sort of how we operate and how we make this the most efficient use of our time and the public's time to make sure we're all working together. But yeah, those are my words of advice.
Sometimes you will receive emails from the media, okay? Please, three directors email to the city administrator or myself, okay? Because we want to centralize the message, okay? Or because maybe you are not aware, or you don't know the detail, or maybe you will say something that, you know, is going to be there on the public, you know what I mean? Also, if residents send, they're going to send you emails. If you don't know the answer, you know, don't, you know, research, ask the staff. Don't give an answer that maybe you don't feel 100% sure, you know what I mean? It's okay to say, you know what? Thank you for the email. I want to research, I'm going to reach out to X and X to, you know what I mean? And I'm going to follow up with you. And follow up with your neighbor. When the people send you an email, even if, you know, I don't know if you have seen me, sometime in the last two weeks, we received a lot of email about the vehicle registration fees. Some of those emails were very, you know, you know, with a lot of...
Intuitive.
Exactly.
Emotional.
Emotional, passionate. I would say other word, but I don't know. But then acknowledge them that we are, you know, thank you for your email, I understand, but you know, because they, you know, even though we disagree, but you know, you know, acknowledge that you received the email at least. We are doing that, a reply?
Yes, we, you'll be receiving an informational email in the next week or two, where we're going to be implementing an automatic reply to council emails sent to the council email address that acknowledges that the email was received, and then if it was in relation to providing information on an agenda item, that it, rest assured, it's been shared with the common council members. It won't necessarily be read aloud, and if they have a pressing matter, they should contact the city. We also have the link to the notify me section in there as well, and I think there was one other, there was one other item we had that we were going to link in that email also. So, but that's something that we've noticed, again, that, you know, if somebody emails the council email address, there's never been an actual reply to confirm that folks have, their email has been received. So we're looking to, again, always make improvements where we can.
Some of that, you know, we have, that we work, sometime, you know, they send us email in the morning, afternoon, and in my case, sometime I look at email at night, you know, or the next day, because, you know. So at least that reply, you know, is like, we got it, we're going to respond when, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And I do want to throw to council members, do you have any questions for Chad, for anybody?
I don't have any questions. It's just always great to put the spotlight on all of the work that gets done, and, you know, there's so much that happens here that can be very confusing. I've sat through a lot of meetings like this. As a journalist, would love to make this required watching for members of our community to better understand all the work that goes on, both in front of the cameras and behind it. So appreciate all that you do, and this is really helpful to make sure that we're all, you know, conducting the business of the city with the highest standards of decorum and treating each other with respect and, you know, representing and acting as if, you know, in the way that we want everyone in our community to, you know, modeling that behavior, if you will. One thought I had as we were going through your presentation was, I've been through a couple council meetings where folks have come through to speak for non-agenda items, and then, you know, they say, have said, well, you know, where's their, there's no back and forth, why are you not answering me? And, you know, there's, I've seen some and heard some grumblings from sitting in the audience. I don't know if we, that would be something we could add, that slide that you have or some semblance of that, especially if we know there's going to be a larger group of folks coming in and say, here's the ground rules, you have three minutes, you have a timer here, it's on screen for you, the council can't do this, but we could put it on a future agenda, just to kind of make, you know, clarify what the goals and the outcomes of this conversation are.
Yeah, excellent suggestion, and that is one that we know we need to implement some improvements there to better create the expectation of what's going to happen when you speak, right? So that folks know that there's not an opportunity for that back and forth. And obviously, that's to create, again, the measure of order and efficiency for the meeting, because you can only imagine that if there was a back and forth, you know, with 20 different speakers, what that might do to the entire meeting. And then, of course, if, for whatever reason, there gets to be, you know, a little bit of an elevated blood pressure during that time, you know, then what does it devolve into? So definitely, we'd actually looked about six to eight months ago into trying to put some sort of electronic system together so that folks would be registering electronically, they could register well in advance of the meeting and be able to convey that very information. Unfortunately, it was cost prohibitive for us to kind of look at that for the one function, but we're going to continue to find ways to enhance that.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
Why we don't have some rules?
Sure.
To display, like over there, you know, like fill out the form if you're going to speak.
Right.
And then you have three minutes to speak of whatever, and then mention something like log and say, you know, some, have some rule, you know, display on the wall, you know, like over there, so people...
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. We could also look to update the form itself that folks use to register and potentially include the information there also.
Yeah. I don't know.
Kind of a specific one, you know, with when they come to speak on a non-agenda, we can't have back and forth. When they come to speak on an agenda item, you know, like the other night, we were talking about the easement, easement for the, and Mr. Hayes spoke, you know, and I said, you know, and I said, Mr. Hayes, this is across, and then you were, no, no, you can't, you guys were hushing me, and like, yeah, I think I can have that dialogue, because it's an agenda item. He was completely wrong, and I, you know, this is not through the storm, you know, it's across this property. And I think we can have that if it's an agenda item.
I don't know. I think my understanding was, you know, in Plan Commission, I don't know if I am wrong, I, we can have that one-to-one with the developer, you know what I mean? Who asks a question, but then when we give the opportunity to people to speak three minutes, and then they are starting shooting from the, oh, this and that, you know what I mean? And then that, this one is sometimes, how long those meetings are going to become if we start in that, you know? I don't know. What are the details?
Yeah, I think, to your point, Alder Herbs, a strategy that you could potentially use in those situations is that after the public comment has been made on an agenda item, whenever you go to then speak on that particular item during the discussion, you could potentially clarify, you know, information that may have been incorrect.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
I did want to thank you, Chad, for putting together, obviously, this presentation, but also for the first draft of the council handbook. I think that's outstanding. Really happy that we have that. I do have some suggestions for how we can add some things to it. Having been through this a few times, I have some ideas about how it would be nice for people to know things upfront.
Yeah.
Especially in regards to common issues, like transportation, which is, I feel like the number one.
Yep.
One of the, how to handle transportation? How does handle certain issues?
Right.
But other things as well, so I would be happy to have a conversation with you offline about that.
Transportation?
When we get emails about transportation issues.
So like probably speeding complaints or crashes.
Like, how do you handle it? Who do you contact? What do we do? What's the process? What is the staff's obligation? What is your obligation?
Sure.
So that people understand their role to play in it, because that's, I think, some of the most challenging things to navigate is how to handle these constituent concerns and understanding your role and the city's role in it.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing your feedback and any feedback from any council member. And I really would encourage you and almost plead with you to read this book. I know that you've got all kinds of things to do, but we can go into a little bit more detail in a handbook than we can go into in a PowerPoint presentation. The mayor mentioned a couple of things already that we are able to go into more detail within the handbook, so please take some time to read it, and again, please share any feedback that you have in regards to it.
Chad?
Yeah.
Maybe putting Valerie's Robert's Rules of Order cheat sheet right in this would be a good idea, too.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't have any additional questions, but I just thank you. I really appreciate just having this available, and I give you my word that I will read the packet.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Anything else from the council? Anything else that you wanted to cover before we wrap up?
No, I'm going to assume that everybody's probably ready to call it a night after a meeting last night, so I don't have anything else. Although it looks like Alder Vafadari is looking, like she's in for the long haul.
I'm ready. I have this and then Seda at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow. Let's go.
Oh, yikes. That's why I never want to be on Seda. As our next agenda items is announcements, our next committee of the whole meeting is May 28, 2025. I'm going to consider moving that start time to 6:00 p.m. If anyone has any problems with that, please let me know. And we're going to run it by Fact TV for sure first, but if the council members have any issues with moving the time, please let me know.
So what is the topic for May?
I don't think we've established that yet. Did we have?
We have one standing topic that is finance-related. And then I've got four topics that have been presented to me through various channels that I am offering to Alder Gerhart for her consideration.
But the finance topic is so important, and I think we really need to dig into that, so we'll see. TBD.
Yeah, and we kind of go heavy on finance and budgeting in the first several committees of the whole when, after elections, so you'll see that in May, and then you'll get an update from our city's public finance advisors in June, and our financial management plan in then July. I think we're already into CIP and some budget-related matters by then, too, so.
Seeing no other announcements, we can move on to adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:46 p.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you.